Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the town council meeting to order. Today is Monday, February 3rd, and with Councillor Durick lead us in the Pledge Allegiance.
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Sue, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Lesser?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Here.
Councillor Bailey?
Here.
Councillor Carbone? Councillor Clancy?
Here.
Councillor Durick?
Here.
Councillor Rhodes?
Here.
Councillor Timbrow?
Here.
Councillor Zambrello?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And we have two proclamations tonight. The first is for the Lunar New Year, the year of 4723. I bet a bunch of you knew that was the year, but it is 4723. And let me just read this. Whereas Weathersfield honors the rich heritage of our Asian-American Pacific Islander communities and joins with them in commemorating the most significant holiday rooted in ancient tradition, we take this opportunity to welcome the arrival of the Lunar New Year, year 4723, and share in accompanying festivities and celebrations. And whereas each year of the lunar calendar is represented by one of 12 Zodiac animal signs along the sun's path through the universe, 2025 is the year of the snake. The snake symbolizes wisdom and transformation, offering opportunities for personal growth and change. And whereas dating back thousands of years, the Lunar New Year is steeped in history and legend that celebrates the rite of spring and cycles of architectural production, marking the period of time when farmers could take a rest from their work in the fields to be with their families. And whereas the Lunar New Year begins with the new moon on the first day of the first lunar month, this year, January 29th, and celebratory events are held for the next 15 days, ending with a full moon and a lantern festival on February 12th. And whereas today, individuals, families, and communities around the world celebrate the Lunar New Year with joyful feasts of food and dance, brightly colored decorations, exchange of gifts, tributes to celestial deities, and special expressions of remembrance and respect. And whereas, we welcome the opportunity to experience one of the most beautiful aspects of the AAPI culture by sharing the celebration of the Lunar New Year, year 4723, and look forward to the hope and promise that every new year brings to all the people in all of their communities. Now here, therefore, I, Ken Lesser, Mayor of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim January 29th through February 12, 2025, as the celebration of the Lunar New Year here in Weathersfield. And I set my hand unto the seal, uh, the cause of the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed this day, the third day of February 2023. That is for the Lunar New Year. The second and last proclamation I have for tonight is Black History Month 2025. And I'll read it, and please bear with me again. Whereas the origins of Black History Month date back to 1915, when Dr. Carter Woodson founded the organization known today as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and knowledge of the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that African-Americans have made in shaping our country, our society, and our communities. And whereas each year, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History sets a theme for Black History Month, the theme for 2025 is African-Americans and Labor. And whereas this year's Black History Month theme focuses on the various and profound ways that working, or that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skill and unskilled work, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experience of black people. And whereas to participate in observing Black History Month, those interested can visit www.asalh.org to learn more about the origins of this month. And now I, therefore, Ken Lesser, Mayor of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim February 25th as Black History Month and encourage everyone to observe this month by acknowledging the history and challenges faced by African-Americans and paying tribute to this community for its strength, perseverance, character, and contributions, all of which enrich our lives. And now witness thereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed this third day of February. Thank you. So we commemorate the Lunar New Year and the Black, and Black History Month. We, moving on the agenda, we have no hearings tonight. We now will invite a public comment, and I will read what I read each week, uh, each meeting. During the public comment period, members of the public will have five minutes to speak on any issue. There is a lighted timer at the podium to help each speaker be aware of the time remaining. When you step up to the podium, please state your name and address. At this point, the green light will come on showing your five minutes has begun. The yellow light will come on when you have one minute left. At this time, begin to wrap up your comments, and then the red light will come on when you reach the five-minute limit. After speaking, you should return to your seat in the council chambers to allow the next person to see, to speak. And I ask that you address your comments to the entire council and refrain from speaking directly to or about any council members or the audience. I ask you, also ask you, refrain from any derogatory comments or personal attacks. Please remain respectful. This section is for public comment only, and the council will generally not engage in dialogue during this portion of the agenda. If there is any follow-up needed, please leave your contact information with the town clerk, and the town manager will follow up with you. Now I invite any member from the public to come and speak. Anna, please. And please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Anna Kozongi, and I live at 11 Mountain Laurel Drive here in Weathersfield. So I'm a senior at Weathersfield High School, and I have been working closely with the mayor these last few weeks in hopes of making a positive change at my school. I would like to first start by thanking the mayor for this opportunity, as I was very excited to begin and work towards something greater than just like the classroom, something more town-wide. So I've organized a list of what's been happening in December and in January at Weathersfield High School, and I've come across three main categories that typically come each month. So we have impact in the community, which is more like volunteerism and service, just general fun activities such as sports and art-related activities, the futures for juniors and seniors, and then just miscellaneous activities. So I'm going to read some highlights from December that highlight these categories that I just named. So in December, we had various drives for toys, food, and CCMC. So this was a great way to give back to the community. We also had a blood drive. We also had the start of the sports season, such as basketball, swim and dive, cheer, dance, and track. We had two winter concerts. We had tryouts for the Hello Dolly musical. We had seniors who were recognized for their NGSS assessment scoring in the top 10% of their class. We had financial aid nights for the seniors who are working towards that next step into college. And then juniors are continuing to work on their capstone project with the seniors' assistance as this is a crucial credit needed to graduate. In January, we had midterms, which are a very important but stressful time. We had more fundraisers, notably the National English Honor Society is working on drives and outreach program and tutoring centers. We had a social media detox day, which falls into the miscellaneous category, but it was a really great way to just pull away from our phones and social media. We continued to plan eighth grade night, which is important for incoming eighth graders. Seniors are working on cap and gown measurements, and they're also fundraising with Safe Grad for their Safe Grad party after graduation. These are very important for our future as we plan to step into college. Additionally, there's the continuation of sports, clubs, and artistic activities. And in general, I would summarize it as the workload continuing, but much slower since all the activities we had in December. So overall, these were some of the major things that have been happening these last two months. But since January didn't have nearly as many things as December, I decided to talk to some of the students, and I had a quick questionnaire for not a randomly selected sample. So it wasn't super representative of the population, but I just handed it to some friends and some peers that I thought would have some answers for me. So in general, the activities, some things we're liking, sports, specifically track, rock climbing. And then artistic activities, people are really liking the musical, they're liking their English classes, and then art electives. Someone also mentioned Eagle Crew, which is a great thing because it helps with touring our eighth graders and also just like volunteering where necessary. For academics, we had a variety of answers, ranging from hard to good, but in general, people said they were enjoyable, but tough, the classes, I mean. And then in general, I asked about the atmosphere, and this time of year is tough because it was midterms and it was the peak of our academics, but a lot of people said it was pretty tired and tense. But there was a general consensus that it was relieving now that that week is over, and so we can look forward to something new. Like I said, my statistics teacher would want me to say, this is not representative of the entire school, but I'm working to, you know, it's a learning experience. I will, I'm working to fix this for a possible survey in the next few months. Overall, I'm excited to continue to, continue working on this as, you know, it's just for the betterment of my community, and we'll see what February has for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're an incredible student leader. We appreciate you. Mom, if you'd like to, we don't always do this, take a little picture. If you, if you would like, I see you taking a lot of photos. So Anna, the councillors and Fred, everybody, well, just sorry, everyone, this will only take a minute, but like, come on, come on over. Bitch, Brianna, everyone, Sue, you're welcome to join. You want to be in front, or do you think she should come back here? I don't know.
Sure, why not?
Sure.
I feel like the momentum was for that end.
In front of me.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mom.
Thank you so much.
Well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're going to do that with every public comment?
Yeah, sorry about that, everybody. If anybody wants to have our picture taken with us.
Appreciate that, thank you so much.
Yeah, you, thank you, thank you for being here. So now we will continue. Thank you, everybody. Further public comment, anybody who would wish to address? Yes, ma'am, please.
Claudia Longmore, Three Schoolhouse Crossing. I read the request to the EPA and deep for the Russell Road recycling project, and I have some comments and concerns. In the last council meeting, it was stated that the facility would either be built on a small part of state property off the Berlin Turnpike back there, or on Jordan Lane where the leaf composting operation is. Both areas are included in the proposal, not one or the other. The proposal states that the site is not located in close proximity to a residential area. And I spoke to Mr. Presley last week, and he emphasized that the project would be in the middle of the parcels. I could understand if the parcels were larger. However, the two sites combined are at most only half a mile wide and seven tenths of a mile long. Next to the Jordan Lane parcel along the Berlin Turnpike are the senior apartments, the Village at Weathersfield, and Park Ridge condos. The second, the state-owned land at 300 Russell Road, borders the Crossing's condominium complex. There are also two houses half a mile south on Russell Road, and Martin Road in Newington is at the base of Cedar Mountain, only four tenths of a mile away. All of these should be considered in close proximity. It's not as simple as a grant approval equals recycling plant. This is a multi-phase tenure project extending to 2034. The grant-asked portion of this project is only to develop the Jordan Lane site so that the transfer station can be moved there from Marsh Street in order to expand yard waste operations. Additional funding will still be needed before the physical structure for food will, food waste can be built, for which anaerobic digestion is mentioned. This is not an environmentally friendly option. The process pollutes, causes odors, has a high risk of toxic spills, is expensive, and causes a decrease in property values. If the 172 units at the crossings decrease in value, so would Weathersfield tax revenue. Other major costs not included are two 5,000-square-foot buildings for trash and recycling in 2027 and a recycling coordinator. According to the map on the proposal, the entrance should be on the Jordan Lane extension. If that's the case, why does Russell Road have to be extended to meet Jordan Lane at the top of Balfour? Is this part of the site development, or is this another additional cost? There is a ridgeline protection for Cedar Mountain. This parcel is heavily forested and contains wetlands and abundant wildlife. Currently, Weathersfield has less than 4% open space. We can't afford to lose anymore. Finally, the Cicea referendum was passed over six years ago, and its use is still being debated. How are you possibly going to manage a project with the scope of the Russell Road project? I'm not opposed to recycling, but these two small sites are not the place for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Further public comment? Anybody? Sure, and then Bob, I view you next.
Good evening. My name is Ben Frazini Kendrick. My family lives at 467 Church Street here in Weathersfield. First off, thank you all so much for your time. I really appreciate your indulging me in these statements. I used to work as an attorney. I had a lot of municipal and Board of Ed clients, and I've seen how hard your compatriots work for the big, big dollars, and I really appreciate everything that you all do here for us. And I also know that town politics in general can be largely distant or disconnected from our nationwide party groups. That being said, recently, those politics have started entering our town and my home. I don't really know how to speak with my children about whether or not ICE will take their friends away. I don't know how to talk to them when they say they've heard things like "dirty Jew" being muttered in a hallway of a school building. So this has been terribly concerning to me. As you can tell, I'm not the world's most healthy person. I have Parkinson's disease, and it's cost me a lot to be here. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate the chance to be out in public for a change. So far, it hasn't taken my words, so I will use them to best effect that I can while I still have them. And so I come to you today not because of the physical hurt that I have, but I come asking for your help. I have a wound in my heart and my soul, and it is deep, and it is wide, and it is grievous. And I've tried on my own to cauterize this wound as best I can, and I've had no success. So with your indulgence, I would like to cover just three points, a little background about myself, which I think you've already gotten a little bit of, what I believe to be the source of this wound and the nature of the help that I am seeking. I hold three degrees, a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science, an MS in Education, and a Law degree. And during my studies, my areas of focus were media analysis, policy analysis, and peace studies, and conflict resolution. And it is in that capacity that I appear before you this evening. More significantly, and maybe more relevant to our proceedings tonight, I have never been a part of either political party. I have not voted for either party's primary candidate in the presidential elections for more than 20 years. I have no political allegiance other than to my own heart and my own mind. How I came to this position is a little beyond the scope of my statements, but what is also relevant is that I'm also a pacifist. This type of belief system where you don't wander with another group of people as your, as your party, and you hold beliefs that can sometimes lead to scorn and ridicule is not the easiest road to walk. And I do also adhere to the belief that that government, which governs best, governs least. I believe that this, you know, I hope that this gives me a unique perspective that I can provide for you all here this evening. And I ask just that sometime now or in the future, you entertain the belief, the possibility that some of what I'm asking for tonight has some truth to it. I submit to you that the wound that I bear is born out of the animosity, acrimony, and animus that I've seen between our two largest political parties in our country. It breaks my heart to see my fellow people, my fellow countrymen, and my family turn to each other with anger and resentment. I do not think our current political parties can fix this. However, new do I believe, nor do I believe that is irretrievably broken. In my view, the primary political parties have abandoned us largely and no longer represent our best interests. They've no longer put the success of our nation ahead of their own ambition. And I ask, you know, for us all to reflect, when was the last time that we had a candidate that we voted for, that we genuinely, genuinely liked? For me, it's been a long time. I did not come to this positions in a vacuum. These sentiments are, you know, led by George Washington back in 1796, when he's stepping down after his first, or sorry, his second term as president. And he said, "Political parties may not then answer popular ends. They are likely to become potent engines by which cunning, ambitious, and unprincipled men will be enabled to subvert the power of the people and to usurp for themselves the reins of government, destroying afterwards the very engines which have lifted, lifted them to unjust dominion. It exists under different shapes than all governments, more or less stifled, controlled, or repressed, but in those of the popular form, it is seen in the greatest rankness and is truly their worst enemy. The alternate dominion of one faction over another, sharpened by the spirit of revenge natural to party dissension, is itself a frightful despotism, but this leads at length to a more formal and permanent despotism that is orders and miseries which result gradually incline the minds of men to seek security and repose in the power, or the absolute power of an individual. And sooner or later, the chief of some prevailing faction, more or able or more fortunate than his competitors, turns this disposition to the purposes of his own elevation and the ruins of public liberty."
Ben, I'm going to ask you to summarize, and I'll remind you, and I don't think you've spoken here before, we do have another public comment towards the end of the meeting, but I'm going to ask you to summarize as your time is up.
I appreciate that. And I just want to say, the hurt that I have is torn anew with every threat, every act of violence, every misunderstanding, every action out of ignorance. And I'm not the only one that I, that I think is hurt. I see the hurt on the faces of a lot of people. And so I just ask for you, you know, and I, I'm pleading to an extent that we can find a better way. Let us be better than Congress. Let us be better than our political parties. Let's be better at communicating and finding common ground on which we could all communicate and agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Thank you. To have further public comment, Mr. Woodward, did you have your hand up? Yes, please. Thank you, Ben.
Good evening. My name is Bob Woodward. I live at 456 Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield. I want to go back to the 23rd, when we had the open meeting with the school, elementary school renovation and rebuildings and things like that. The gentleman that run, is head of the group that has been hired by the town to give advice basically said there were things that needed to be decided. Where is the swing school going? What school or schools should go first into the swing school, the school it's going to replace? Or should they go in one at a time by the schools that are being rebuilt? And then there was one more in the rear reminder. Where should pre-K go? And that night on the 23rd, I said, "This sounds like something that the town should vote, that we, the citizens, should vote." And I commented that in December, we had a very successful vote. We knew how to do votes. I was disappointed with the gentleman's response. He said, "We don't know much about votes." That disappointed me. I don't think this is a decision recommendation maybe by a group that we've hired, but not a decision. This feels like a decision for the whole town. I said this earlier tonight downstairs where that group was meeting, but I would like to see something on the council agenda to have a vote. I think we could accomplish something in March and still accomplish whatever they want to do for a referendum deadline. But I think, believe firmly that these factors are, should be a vote of the entire town. And there were a few people commenting in different ways downstairs, and I think it would be a good way to, healthy way, to express what the town would feel about that. The other thing I want to say, is this woman gave a nice report, a nice set of comments on the sites out on the west side of town. But one of the things I want to suggest, I'll go back to when Mr. Presley first presented this, it was all verbal. And there's something on the agenda tonight about 154, 156, something like that on Prospect Street. And I know Prospect Street, but I don't know where those numbers are. Is it possible that sometimes, when it would be helpful, we can use the screen and do a presentation instead of making it all verbal? That might be helpful to us. I realize this woman had more to say than that, but at the very beginning, it might have shown some things and let us ask some questions there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Thank you, Bob. Further public comment? Yes. Yep. Go ahead. Eileen, I got you next, okay? You're on deck.
Good eve, good evening. My name's Joyce Morissette. I live at 31 Robbins Drive. I've been coming here for the last couple of months, and I have the same concern about the security at the community center. I haven't seen anything ever noted on the agenda as far as my concerns with the seniors and the nursery school children in the building daily. And I have presented to the council a security company that would like to submit a bid regarding some security services. I know the turf for Mill Woods was denied, and I was just wondering if any of those funds were allocated for some sort of security system or even the lighting at this point, but something so those doors are not all open, a fob could be used. I know you're, you're very kind, and I know you're working on it. And they're all good ideas, but I just never see anything noted. So I'll just keep coming.
No, thank you, Joyce. Appreciate it. Thank you. Eileen?
Thank you. Eileen Godbout, 187 Griswold Road. And I'd like to start by thanking everyone who's here tonight and everyone who's had something to say. I do think it's so important for all of us to be heard. And tonight, I'm here to comment about their recent article in Weathersfield Life about Mill Woods Park. And I'd like to, again, thank everyone who voted in the referendum. I think Weathersfield citizens can be proud of their participation. My awareness of the proposed changes began in late September, and since that time, I've been paying more attention to how the park is used, and I want to update you as to what I've seen. Seen a lot of soccer games, ultimate frisbee, tennis, hiking, and dog walking happening in the park all the time. And I know that springtime and summer will bring plenty of baseball, softball games, and even cricket on Friday nights. The fields are clearly used as a safe, open place for parents to bring their children to play year-round. I regularly see the area, which was supposed to become a fenced-in, inaccessible synthetic field, used by many different people. Even recently, as it's been covered in snow, I've seen snowshoe tracks and cross-country ski tracks. Last Sunday, in the span of 40 minutes, I saw three separate groups utilizing the large green space. There are sled marks on the small hill near the baseball field, and my family's really enjoyed watching the skaters using the ice on the upper pond for a few weeks now. Sad to see, there's been a lot of tree cutting and habitat removal, but that's a story for another time. In the article, it said, quote, "Over the summer, the consultant walked the park and got the flavor for it. The consultant walked the whole park," end quote. I would suggest much more observation is needed. This park is in use 365 days a year in all four seasons. And what I've seen on a day-to-day basis is that the parking lots are mostly empty. Traffic is non-existent. Restrooms are needed, and the fields are in use. My goal is to protect and preserve Mill Woods Park and to encourage the council to repair and maintain existing structures and fields. I do agree with comment in the article saying the park is a lot more than a sports park. It has a mix of everything. Mill Woods Park is such a great resource for so many people in this town, and it is my sincere hope we keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Further public comment? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I attended the January 23rd meeting of the, what do they call it? School Advisory Board. Mayor, you were there, and Mr. Forrest was there. Several other people were there who were up here on the guy- were up here on the dais. And, you know, it was a completely controlled presentation. We had the consultant walking around, talking from this podium, from this position, talking into this microphone. We have 10 more, 11 more, 10 more microphones, and nobody was using them. Nobody. The reason that they were using this room was because, one, it's huge, holds a lot of people, it has a lot of technology in it. The man from, who takes care of all of this electronic stuff was here, and because your consultant that you hired would only, didn't invite anybody up to the podium to talk. People were there, officer was standing, a man was standing there talking without a microphone in front of him. So, to hear him was impossible. Mr. Forrest, you were sitting right here in the front row at a certain point, I mean, the whole meeting, but when you were speaking, I couldn't understand a word you said. Not a word. Yet, we had all these speakers, all these microphones sitting there, being not used, not being used at all. What, I mean, I understand, the people that are, the Russ Moorean Group is in charge of the consultant. They probably told him how it was going to be. You get up here, you hold the microphone, and don't let anybody near it. Now, I believe that, Mr. Forrest. I certainly do. Because you had all these other microphones sitting there, and for efficiency, maybe that's the great word, efficiency, but the fact was, every person that wanted to talk could have come up here and sat in front of one of these microphones, and when it was his turn to talk, he could have introduced himself, herself, would have gone on and discussed what they thought, and we all could have heard that, and the man, the consultant then could have responded. Instead, the individual down there where the policeman is standing, he talked for two minutes, and then the consultant talks into here for about 30 seconds, and then he answers his own question. What a put-up deal that was. A waste of time. Then, where is the presentation? It was taped, or whatever kind of word you use. It was put on electronic media. Where in the world is it? I keep looking for it on the internet, on the website of Weathersfield, whatever you're called, dot com or whatever, at the website. I don't find it. I should be able to hear what your consultant said, and I should be able to hear what that man said over there where the police officer was standing. Otherwise, it was a complete failure. You had all the workings right here to put on a good presentation, and you, and that guy, that consultant, that group failed. I mentioned that at their meeting at 6:00. But the fact remains, why? Why? I had this headset, which helps. I couldn't hear that man, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Forrest, and you were sitting there, and I was sitting right here. So, anyway. I also had submitted a form, or a request, to the FAQ for Downs into construction, which is part of the operations of the schools, and I asked some questions. It took 10 days, 10 days for someone to post on that FAQ position my question and the answer. Very inefficient. And these are the people we're going to trust to come up with what it's going to be for a school operate, a new school system and the cost. You trust them.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
You're welcome. I've got 14 seconds left.
No, the time is up. Thank you, but you have, as you know, another public comment at the end. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the public at this time? Seeing none, we will move on in our agenda to council reports. Does anybody on the council have a report this evening? Somebody? Counselor Zambrello.
Hello, thank you. This probably won't be a surprise to anyone, but I'm going to talk about the school referendum. And so, I was running in right at the last second today because I was in their meeting right before and trying to get as much info as I could before I came here. So, as you've heard from a few of the speakers tonight, there was, there was an information session, discussion here in this room on the 23rd. The consultants came, and they showed the visuals that we've been able to see in their meetings, so that more folks could take a look at those of each of the proposed swing school locations. They went through all of the opportunities and constraints, as they call them, and then they had an opportunity for people to give feedback, ask questions. There were some really great questions that night, I got to say, things that I hadn't thought about before. Shows that people were being very thoughtful and engaged, and this room was pretty packed. So, thank you to everybody who came out or who watched it on YouTube. I was just checking to, it is on the town YouTube. I don't see it on the website. Maybe we could make sure it gets linked there in some way, because it was a little tricky to find, because it's under the live tab on the YouTube page, but it is there in case anybody wants to go and take a look at what was said. And to Mr. Young's point, he is absolutely right that it was difficult to hear people's questions that night. Do we, we must have a microphone that we can pass around to people in meetings like that.
Good idea.
I'd be happy to volunteer to pass that around at the next time we do something like this, but he's right that that wasn't, that really, it wasn't okay to not have that accessibility for everybody who needs to hear what the questions are. And it did slow things down, because then the consultant was having to repeat the questions back. So, I appreciate that feedback, and it is something that we can do.
We can do, yep.
And make sure that gets fixed. So, let's see, the other things, okay. So, the meeting that they were just having this evening at 6:00 was to, again, go over the swing school sites and try to pin down, try to pin down a decision. Now, I didn't get to stay for the entire meeting, but from the texts I'm getting, I don't think there was a decision yet, but there will likely be a special meeting again later this week. They're hoping to get a little more feedback, I think, again, not having been in the room. But we should have a decision this week on the swing school site. So, if you have any more feedback on that that you'd like to answer, offer, and you haven't yet, please let me know, let the committee know, use the FAQ, anything that you'd like to do to reach out. But I also, I really appreciate everybody who came to this meeting tonight. There was a packed room, people out in the hallway waiting to speak, were 40 minutes of public comment, which was great. And again, really good questions, people very engaged with this process. There was a mix of people who had strong opinions already, had been to the other meetings, had been engaged with this already, and knew strongly what they feel, but were still there to get information and make sure they're involved in the process. And there were people who this was their first meeting, and they just wanted to come and say, "Hey, I haven't been here before, but I'd like to learn more. This is my opinion, but I want to hear what the reasoning is for this stuff." So, that was really great. That's by far the most people we've had at one of those meetings so far. So, thank you, and if you haven't been to one yet and you'd like to come, they are open to the public. They're meeting pretty much every other week at this point. Again, they might meet even twice this week, but we're trying to get this going, because they're being very methodical, which is great, but we also need to move here and make some decisions so that we can go to the next steps of the project. So, that, I believe, is all I have for today. I don't have more information at this time, unfortunately, but we should have some more soon. But thank you again to everybody for being really engaged in this process. It's very much appreciated and really gives us all the chance to put the best possible project forward, and please continue to participate and make your voices heard. And once we have more information on the schedule and when more public information sessions will be, we will certainly be putting all of that out here, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zambrello. Further council reports. Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Thanks, Mayor. We had the CIAC Committee meet, basically the capital improvement advisory committee. So, this is the committee that meets before we get our budgets going, to talk about all of the major capital improvements that need to be done in town. As you might imagine, we have millions and millions of dollars' worth of work. We're an old town, we've been an old town, and we continue to have infrastructure that needs to be maintained and built. So, they're doing their work. They are the group, fairly non-political group, that advises the town on, you know, with limited resources. We obviously don't have a money tree, but we do want to, of course, put money toward our own infrastructure and support ourselves. And how do we prioritize that? So, of course, they're looking at things like cost, and safety, and visibility, and things of that nature, or those things of that nature, in order to come up with a list that then the council will consider to fund accordingly. So, they're starting that work. And we'll say, one of the things that the town manager, and I want to give him some credit, has taken off of that list is we had, it still needs to be done, but it's not necessarily something that the town needs to fund, is the upgrades for our radio system, right? There was $2 million, there was a $2 million price tag on our, and that's an-ish number, $2 million-ish, on our CIAC budget. We're finding different and more creative ways to pay for that that's not directly from our budget, as far as renegotiation for longer-term leases, et cetera. So, that was, I think that was, they were pleased, the CIAC had had that on their list for a long time, and not have to carry that burden in the area of the budget that we do was a nice, it was nice for them to start off with that positive attitude as they sort of tackle the other 40, or 50, or 60 major projects that we have around town. So, just want to give you guys an update that that has started, and you'll be seeing that list shortly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Forrest. Further council reports. I have a couple. One is just prior to this meeting, the OPEB, these are the benefits, insurance and pension benefits committees met, not really insurance, pension benefits. We had the firefighter pension benefit meeting, and then we had the overall town pension benefit meeting. I'll just remark that the investments that we have and the fiduciary that we have, things are well-managed, very conservative. The funds are growing in a very conservative way, and they're being managed very well, which is very important to the town. Also mentioned that last week, we had the Joint Communication Committee of the Board of Ed and the Town Council, and the main topic was the budget, the board budget, and there are a few workshops for anybody who wants to go. There was one this past Saturday, and I believe Counselor Carbone was there. I know some of us were unable to make it, but there's another one this Saturday. This is on the board budget at Stillman, February 8th. Anybody can attend. And then the final one is February 22nd, and after that, the board in early March will be presenting its budget to the council. And then in March and April, you'll see, we will be having a lot of meetings here on the council and workshops of, and our department. So, we are getting quickly into the budget season, and then by mid-May, May 15th, we're required to pass, to pass a budget. I don't have anything else for council reports, so move on to council comments. Does anybody have any specific comments on the council? Counselor Dirk.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to share the information that even though it's February, preschool registration has already started for the fall sessions, and even with the additional money that we have put in the budget, there are still limited spots. So, anybody who needs to sign up their preschoolers, it's time to start thinking about those options. And for anybody who needs more information, needs more help, you can call 860-721-2887. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dirk. Any other council comments? Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Thanks. Just to you, to the town manager, I was hoping to see if we could get the meeting with the Weathersfield Historical Society together to work on the town history project in the near future. Did just recently have a talk with Doreen Zerarsia, who's the president, and she was interested in sort of continuing the momentum of that project and getting it into phase two, which will be great for everyone in town to sort of see an enlarged history of our town. If we could get that together in the near future, that'd be great. Thanks so much.
Any other council comments? I have a few this evening, as always. First, I want to point out that the Weathersfield Mayor's Charity Ball is on Valentine's Day, February 14th. I know many of the folks on the dais have bought tickets. I hope all of you do, if you can. But I want to reiterate what the proceeds of this ball, of this fundraiser are for. They're for two things. One, for the American Veterans Traveling Tribute Wall, which will be coming to Weathersfield from September 10th to September 14th. I've mentioned that here before. It is a really nice opportunity for Weathersfield to honor our veterans, not just in Weathersfield, but all veterans. And for us, it will shine a light on veterans, and it'll shine a light on our town. The wall is an exact replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall. It's the size of a football field. It came to Manchester this past summer. It's coming to us in September, but in addition, we're going a little further than Manchester. We're bringing 72 other walls, yep, 72, much smaller, that will commemorate all conflicts from World War I through Afghanistan and include September 11th. And we'll have a big ceremony, more information. But the ball is next week to raise money for that, as well as the Weathersfield Food Bank. So, I hope to see many of you there. Also want to mention that some of you may remember, last year, we had the Kid Mayor and Kid School Board Chair Program. It was in all the elementary schools this week. When you start to see some elementary school kids coming here in like March or April, you'll kind of know why or remember, but we will have those young students come, and the goal of that program is to teach our young people democracy and about local government. And I think I had one other item. Oh, I just want to mention, we had a ribbon-cutting in between last meeting and this meeting at Turnpike Laundry on the Jordan Lane Plaza, and the owner there is very excited to get involved in our community, not just to have our business here, but excited to be in our community. That's all I have for council comments. I'll now turn it over to the town. Oh, yeah. Counselor Zambrello.
Thank you. I just got a text from our Board of Ed liaison. Thank you, John, for continuing to be at that meeting. He just told me that they did actually vote on the swing space recommendations, so they are recommending Stillman. So, that will be coming to the board and us soon, but that did, that did happen downstairs, so I wanted everybody to be aware. So, there won't be a special meeting later this week then, but just, that just came through in the nick of time.
Well, thanks for that update in real-time, Counselor Zambrello. Appreciate all your work on that. I know you spent a lot of hours doing it.
With the school in Times Square.
Any other council comments before we move to town manager's report? Okay. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just a couple items for you. First, in front of all of you, you should have a copy of the budget calendar for the rest of the budget season here. It is a little compressed versus last year, because at the end of, between the third meeting of April and the first meeting in May last year, we had one of those extra weeks. We don't have that luxury this time, so we've got to kind of tighten the schedule a bit. So, the dates for the budget work sessions with the departments are all being scheduled right now. As far as your budget deliberation dates, those are up to you. You can certainly add others as well, but these are based upon the council chambers' availability. And similar to last year, we are, in talking with the mayor, going to continue to use this room, so that people can, we can video it, and people can watch it at their leisure the entire budget process. So, if you have any questions on that, if you have any conflicts, please let me know as soon as possible, and we'll do our best to accommodate you. Next, I'll just mention that I was, last week, I attended the Vision Zero Workshop that was held by the Capital Region Council of Governments. I was invited to be on a panel there, due to all the projects we have going on here in town regarding traffic safety, most notably the Safe Streets For All Grant we have on the Silas Dean, and the Raze Grant where we have on the Berlin Turnpike, working with our neighboring communities on both of those. And it was a great session, but one of the things that came out of it, I think, that I think would be important for us to consider, is, was also joined on the panel by the mayor of West Hartford, and she explained how they actually have a Vision Zero goal and a plan. And that opens up further grant opportunities when you have those two things. We do have a regional Vision Zero goal and plan with the Capital Region Council of Governments, but if we had our own, it would just give us that much more emphasis, and I just think it's a good thing to do. And for those that aren't familiar with Vision Zero, the idea is that we would set a goal of reducing our traffic deaths, and that can be either motor vehicle deaths or pedestrians that are hit by motor vehicles, both of those. And, you know, the numbers have been pretty staggering here statewide, and Weathersfield... And, you know, the numbers have been pretty staggering here statewide, and Weathersfield has seen its own share of those as well. So I think it'd be a worthwhile goal, and with the council's direction, I would like to work with staff to bring something forward to you all to consider adopting. I want to also mention, I know that Ms. Morrison mentioned the security improvements at the community center. We are working with our staff now to get an RFP together, to do that, to go out for both door access controls and cameras. So those are two things. We're going to bring that back to the council. The council has given me direction that since some of that money has been freed up, we're going to try to get that done sooner rather than later. So absolutely. Moving on, the last meeting, there was a resident here speaking about stop sign request that has gone unheard, in his words, that no one has met with him on this. I just want to state for the record here that multiple staff members have met with this individual about his stop sign request. In fact, the last three managers have all had the police department do, what's required for a stop sign is you have to do a warrant, whether or not it's, the stop sign is needed at that location. You can't just throw stop signs up because you want to slow down traffic. That's not what they're meant for. It has to be safety considerations beyond that. And so three separate times, most recently while I've been town manager, we conducted another one. It did not pass the warrant, and we informed this resident of that fact. And so I just wanted the rest of the council to know that this has been addressed on multiple occasions. If a stop sign's requested, we always ask police to conduct the warrant. They look at traffic, how many cars go by each day, they look at incidents of any accidents, they look at incidents of speeding, those types of things. And based upon that, they do an analysis and say it's warranted or not, these are DOT requirements. We do have some ability to go outside of that if there's a change in land use, or if there's a change in use overall, that we believe that will warrant a stop sign in the future. So we can be preemptive in that and put in a stop sign, but if it just simply does not meet it and there is no change of the use, we can't, and we won't, because that's not a good use of public dollars and it's not a good use of the stop signs and as what they're meant to be used for. I'd also like to just mention a few things. I've had several calls and concerns regarding both federal funding issues, as we've seen in the news of late. The administration had said that all federal funds were being frozen, and people were asking, how does that affect us here in Weathersfield? That was since rescinded, but it's something that we are still looking at. We do get federal dollars into town, so it will, if that were to happen, it will impact some positions and it will impact some programs. We're doing a full analysis of that right now, but in the meantime, all I can tell you is, until we find out what it is that might or might not be frozen, we're just going to do our best to keep things going and avoid any major disruptions, but we are tracking that and we'll have a better idea at the next meeting for you all. And the last one is the concerns over the ICE raids that have been going on around the country and in our neighboring communities. I know East Hartford, Hartford, some other locations have had ICE agents come, take people away. This is something that we really have little control over, these are federal agents, but we do have in Connecticut protections that our officers will not be involved in any of that, and that if anyone comes in without a warrant, that we can basically tell them, you have to go back, you have to get a warrant, you have to come in. So we're going to make sure they're following the rules, but beyond that, if they have their warrants and they're following the rules, there's not much we can do about it, but we will do everything we can to protect our citizens and continue to monitor that. But I know it's a concern for everyone, and, but it's something that we're watching very closely, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that people are protected and due process is done. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Mrs. Town Clerk, Sue?
Yes, we've just begun to work on the upcoming budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. We're just busy working on that.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, we have no bids. The next item is Item J, the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second by Councillor Zambro. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? See my saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Item K, we have no approval or ordinance resolutions. Item L, no unfinished business, nothing under Item M. Item N, N1, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you Mayor. Some of you may recall, a few months back, we had a similar request from the DOT. This item's for introduction, just so you know, so this will be coming back for a full hearing at the next meeting. But in order to do some of these traffic light improvements that DOT has been in the process of doing, they came before you before for the light in front of the Silas Dean Middle School, right on Silas Dean. They require very small footprints that they need to get easements on in order to put in the new equipment. These lights are just upgraded, they're higher safety levels. And so this particular request is for Prospect, and this is actually at the entrance to Millwoods Park. And so it's for the same equipment that they'll be doing on Silas Dean, and it's just to the small easements that they need in order to put these, the new stoplights in at that intersection. I know the deputy mayor had inquired about the original Millwoods master plan showed a different alignment of the entrance there. That is a strange intersection between Walke Hill and Bablmeyer Road where it goes into the park. We have actually, had reached out to DOT before just to see if they would consider moving a curb there to help improve the situation, and the response was that this project is too far down the line. This is one of 14 lights that they're doing with this contract, and they need to move forward. If they were to stop it, then they would look to us to pay for it. So at this point, staff is recommending just to let them go ahead, do the light. If we decide to change the alignment at a later date, then we can certainly do that. But that is where that is. I'll be happy to answer any questions when it comes back for public hearings.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Is anybody having questions on that? That item is just for introduction, but does anybody have any question? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Town Manager, just thank, I want to thank you for asking and bringing that up with the Department of Transportation. Obviously, I think we'll be attacking that in the near future, but I just want to thank you for sincerely talking to them about the possibility to make an anticipation of a change in that particular intersection. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move to our second public comment session. And just remind councils, after this, we do have executive session before we adjourn. So now I invite any member of the public, you have five minutes, just state your name and address, even if you've done it before. Yes Claudia, I saw your hand first.
Claudia Longworth, Three School House Crossing. I have a letter from an owner at 10 Tanner Crossing. Is this acceptable to read?
Yes, you may.
Okay. It's from Mary Rahm. She's a member of the crossings board of directors, and they also had a board meeting tonight. That's why she wasn't able to be here. She said, would you please remind the council members that there are 172 homes at the crossings where hundreds of taxpayers and voters live directly to the south and east, abutting this proposed facility? And it would have an immediate impact on not just our quality of life, but also our property values. There are also a few other homes on Russell Road, along with a number of businesses, including the Humane Society, numerous restaurants, long-stay hotels, and other businesses directly downwind from the area where they want to put this facility. Prevailing winds in Connecticut are from the northwest to the southeast, so we will be directly impacted by the smells, noise, and increased truck traffic on the only road we must use to get to our neighborhood. It's appalling that they would want to harm so many people so directly. There are 14 member towns in the central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, all of which have more open space than Weathersfield. Let any of them host this proposed facility. We shouldn't have to be their garbage dump. If the council wouldn't consider locating a facility like this, literally anywhere else in town, they shouldn't even be thinking about putting it here. They routinely locate businesses here that would never get approval anywhere else in town. They need to consider whether they would want a composting facility exactly like what they're proposing, directly abutting an upwind from their own property with the only access through their neighborhoods. If they wouldn't approve it for Old Weathersfield or next to their homes, they shouldn't be hiding it over here. Again, there are hundreds of taxpayers, voters, who will be directly affected in a hugely negative way if this project moves forward. Let one of the other member towns host this. I can't believe we need the revenue so badly that they would even consider this proposal. Maybe the town could put more effort into upgrading our portion of Berlin Turnpike, so it would look more like what Newington and Berlin are doing. What they have done on such a heavily trafficked road with so much potential is exactly the kind of revenue-producing businesses we should be looking to locate here. Not a dump in an area the town seems to forget exists unless they're looking for a place to put something that would never fly elsewhere in town. And again, this is from Mary Rahm. She's at 10 Tanner Crossing.
Thank you Claudia, thank you. Further public comment? Ben?
And thank you all again so much for indulging me and your patience, I really appreciate it. I just wanted to make a couple of closing remarks based on my previous comments. I read some material from George Washington, but those similar statements were echoed by Alexander Hamilton, James Madison, and John Adams, just to name a few. All of their thoughts on this topic are accessible on the National Archives. You know, how we got here is kind of beyond the scope of this conversation, but in my view, it's largely irrelevant. What has happened, has happened. We all played a part, myself included, but that doesn't matter. The focus must be now on, you know, how do we heal our wounds? How do we reconcile when things threaten to drive us apart? I don't think that we can let our country descend into factionalism and political infighting between two warring tribes. We must find common ground. I think we must put partisan politics behind us. I submit to you that we must free ourselves from the chains of partisan politics that we've been shackled with and restore our freedom to follow our own hearts. Rousseau has said, in The Social Contract, "Man was born free, and yet everywhere he is in chains." We do not have to keep the noose of partisan politics around our own necks. I implore you, you know, let us be ground zero for a sea change in political discourse. Let us be ground zero for communication, understanding, collaboration. Let us be ground zero for common sense principles, fiscal responsibility, and to protect the most vulnerable among us. This is my firm wish, and I extend my hand to everyone who's here, everyone who can hear these words. Let's be better than the politicians that have led us and threatened to divide us. When history looks back to who stood up to be counted in these times, let it be us. Let us be the ones in this room, in this town, that history sees decades from now. Let our town be the shining city on the hill who lights the way. I speak from the bottom of my heart in making these pleas. I think you can see the sincerity of my words on my face, you can hear it in my voice. You may ask yourself, you know, how can we accomplish that which Americans have been wrestling for, for 100 years or more, with our two-party system? But my firm belief is that if we approach each other with understanding and love in our hearts, we will find the correct path. We will find that there's nothing that we cannot accomplish, no obstacles too big, no river too wide. And I just wanted to part with some closing comments. And then these aren't my words. I've spoken of the shining city on the hill all my political life, but I don't know if ever quite communicated what I saw when I said it. But in my mind, it was a tall, proud city built on rocks, stronger than oceans, windswept, God blessed, and teeming with people of all kinds, living in harmony and peace, a city with free ports that hummed with commerce and creativity. And if it had to be, if there had to be city walls, the walls had doors, and the doors were open to anyone with the will and the heart to get here. That's how I see it, and that's how I see it still. And that was Ronald Reagan, his farewell address to our country in 1989. I believe that we can be the light that others can see through the darkness, we can be the shining city on the hill. Thank you all so much for indulging me in making these remarks. I greatly appreciate it. I have nothing but love for everyone here and who can hear us. May God bless you and your families. Thank you so much.
Thank you Ben, God bless you as well. Thank you. Further public comment? Christine, nice article in the Weathersfield Life?
What was the next paragraph?
Very nice article.
It said, the famous grilled cheese and french fries, it was grilled cheeseburger and french fries and chili dog, just for the record.
Did you make it?
I did not make it, I served them. But that was what we were famous for, I said, oh, he left out the burger part, but anyway, Christine Kelly LaSella, 37 Belmont Street, Weathersfield. So I was just downstairs at the elementary school board meeting, and I did speak. I'm very disappointed in the choice for the swing school. I, you know, kind of went to bat, and I think dividing Standish Park is a bad idea. I know the town manager said, you know, the land is, you know, there's a part here and this is Standish Park. However, Standish Park was in the Standish family from 1671, it was deeded to the town of Weathersfield in 1928. And I continue to share history because I really feel trying to continue to desecrate or ruin, destroy, however I want to, you want to look at it, putting a building in the middle of that park and removing a baseball field, which, in underneath the Weathersfield Town website, Standish Park is 10.6 acres containing a baseball field, a basketball court, a soccer field, tennis pickleball courts, Mikey's Place, and two accessible playscapes for children 2 to 12. That baseball field is on Standish Park, and I don't think the town has a right to remove it, even with a promise to replace it in 10 years, because that's how long it's going to take to get this project going. The people that use Mikey's Place, the people that walk through that park, that use the pickleball, the basketball, the playscapes, Laura's Garden are going to be impacted by heavy equipment, they're going to be, they're going to be impacted by the laborers that come there to park, they're going to be impacted by the delivery of all these materials. And if anyone, even if you've put a swimming pool in your backyard, Mr. Forrest, am I boring you? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Please, well, you're kind of looking away.
Everywhere.
The, you know, you put a swimming pool in your backyard, it's a nightmare. I don't know how those construction vehicles are going to get through that park without ruining what exists. And then there's going to be a school in the middle of it, and then we're going to put green space behind Stillman School, I mean, behind Hamner School. The Stillman Building, they wanted to knock down many, many years ago, and that was saved. And I believe Hamner School is well worth a renovation as opposed to building a swing school just because it sits on the flattest piece of land in town. I know there was conversation, Keisha Farm is favored secondly, but Stillman, you know, they said Stillman Park seems to be a great place. I think you're going to get a lot of pushback from residents. I've lived in Old Weathersfield since 1990. I grew up in Weathersfield, I went to High Crest from first grade on. My kindergarten school was Colonel John Chevster. That is the only school in this town that has ever been knocked down, to my recollection. Every other school has been either, you know, redone or used for another purpose. You can't put a swing school and keep the existing Hamner there. And I really, I'm bringing this to your attention because you all appointed this committee, and this is nothing against all them, but they're going to bring it to you, and you're going to get a tremendous pushback from Old Weathersfield and people who are involved in the historic district. Never mind, and I didn't bring this up downstairs, you have to go in front of the Historic District Commission, and I know that there's nothing filed yet because you guys don't have drawings. That does- That doesn't mean that they're going to accommodate what the design is, A, and B, if you reflect on buildings getting knocked down in Old Weathersfield, it doesn't happen. People have to beg to get a garage taken down, and I know because I live there, and I've renovated my home. I'm not a know-it-all. I'm just sharing facts with you, and I just feel you guys really taking into consideration the history. When Mr. Standish, I have so many notes, oh my God, I missed the first public comment. When Jared Standish donated that port, that Standish Park to Weathersfield, his intent was to preserve, preserve the rare setting and appearance of a most typical New England village. Don't take that away. And I, you know, I did this with Mill Woods, and, and I really, really think that, you know, you have a blank canvas with Keisha. Bringing the dead horse up again. I know there's a referent, you know, an RFP for that. There's a perfectly open space, and then you can put the fields that were generously promised in 2018, and it's 2025, and there's still nothing at Keisha. We don't need a huge farmland. We have Anderson Farms. You got a farm on Willow Street. They can put a farm behind that barn, and, and then you're not infiltrating an already existing park that has meaning to so many people here. And, and I just think that, that consideration needs to be taken into effect. And I got my hand slapped on Facebook because I wrote about that house on the corner of Collier and Highland Street. This again just falls under, please, share with people what's going on, because so many people, even on my Facebook, like, never even heard that the town wanted to use that for an office.
Christine, I'm, I'm asking you to summarize.
And we need to do the community center before the town gets more offices.
Thank you, Christine. Excuse me. Any further public comment tonight?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. First of all, I haven't heard a word from anybody on this council regarding what I proposed some time ago with the old Little Red Schoolhouse. We still have people in there using that schoolhouse for no rent at all, which is incredible. It's been going on since 1976 as tenants without payment, and not a word from this town council or the town manager about it. The last I heard was, in the summertime, people who are working on it are on summer vacation. It was way back then, Mr. Manager. Where the heck have you been? I haven't heard a word.
Mr. Young, please, I ask you not to be.
Yeah, we, we give everybody respect. Tell me, do I deserve, does he deserve any respect?
He does.
And no, he doesn't.
He does.
He has not answered my FOIs. He hasn't.
Mr. Young.
I sent you three. I didn't even get acknowledgements. Didn't even get acknowledgements from you, sir.
I ask you to.
We have rules. He's not following the rules. And when I've asked for information about the Little Red Schoolhouse, and I came up here and gave a proposal that maybe we should be considering using it for the Transitional Academy, don't forget, the Traditional Academy over here on Silas Dean Highway, which is a business office, is coming up for renewal in the middle of 2026. Our rent there is roughly $60,000 or $58,000 a month. If we took that, if we had put in the budget to put a little extra shack in the back of the Little Red Schoolhouse that would accommodate the 11 students and 11, 11 people that go in there and use the Transitional Academy, we could save a lot of money. No, we continue to pay, and it's in the budget, BOE's budget. You don't like what I said? I'll give you a call tomorrow. I want to hear from you.
Please do. I've told you multiple times, just call me instead of this little tirade you do, but call me anytime.
Thanks. I don't appreciate though, no. I want it really in writing because I don't trust you, okay? Yeah, you don't trust me either, but I don't trust you because of the way you respond. And I've been waiting for information from you, and I don't get it.
Mr. Young.
So anyway, as I'm saying.
Please.
I hope you're putting it in the budget to do something with that Little Red Schoolhouse. Empty it out, and let's put it in, make it into a Transitional Academy for those 11 or 12 students, and save a lot of money over the course of X amount of years, because we're renting over here for seven, 60-some, 50, 50-some thousand, almost $60,000 a year. And that's a lot of money, and we could save a lot of money. Next, Christine mentioned about the 303 Highland Street, that that's the old farmhouse on, on the Keisha property. It's not a farm. Nobody should call it a farm. There's nothing being produced there. There hasn't been anything produced there for years. It's a property. So anyway, it says here, the project is being, and I didn't read any articles, only your RFP, the project is being partially funded by both certified local government, that's $20,000, and supplemental certified local government, that's another $20,000, and grants through the State Historic Preservation Office and the Department of Economic Community Development. The total cost is not to exceed $80,000. That's a lot of money to dump into a old, it's not even old. It's probably a 1940s, just like the barn, probably made with two-by-fours, not post and beam like you would find down here on Old Main Street, on those old houses. This is just a house that should really be replaced, demoed. And, and you should have a demo cost in here too, which is probably going to be $5,000. And do we really need, do we really need more space? I guess if we have the current manager here, continue on, I guess we'll keep building our population of town employees. You got, well, you got a new one in your office and a few other places out of this budget.
Mr. Young, I'm going to ask you to summarize, please.
Yeah, I'll summarize, yeah. We're over, we're way over budget, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
We're way over budget.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there any further public comment tonight? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session. Motion by Councilor Roach, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. All right.